Good afternoon. We are live captioning our meetings. Please look at the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I will call order the special meeting of the Maricopa Community College District Governing Board, January 14, 2025. For the record, I will do a roll call vote of the board members. Ms. Jackson Long?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Dr. Norene?
Present.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
And myself. So entire board is here, and we have two items on the agenda today. The election of board president and the election of board secretary. So proceeding rapidly because we're a few minutes behind, I will now open the floor for nominations for the office of president. Are there any nominations?
Ms. Bittersmith?
Ms. Sullivan?
I'd like to thank you for your year of service and nominate you for another year as chair of our governing board.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any nominations? Please? Seeing none, I will declare that nominations are closed.
You accept the nomination?
I don't believe I have a choice. But I but I'm honored for that. So thank you for giving me another year to work on challenges for this year from as of last year. So. We actually have to vote. Sorry. I do have to vote. So all board members in favor of myself as serving as president for the board for the next calendar year, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, we will now then open the floor for nominations for the office of secretary. Are there any nominations?
Ms. Bitter Smith?
Dr. Norene?
I'd like to nominate Marie Sullivan for since we're secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Thor. You're being whispered. Are you sure? I think the answer is yes. Any other nominations? Seeing none, then I would declare the nominations are closed and all board members in favor of Ms. Sullivan is serving as secretary of the governing board for the year 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Ms. Sullivan, you are drafted again. Well. Thank you. So before we do that, I do want to say thank you to Dr. Norene, who's never failed to step in to do whatever he's asked to do, including sometimes chairing remote agenda reviews, other things. So I appreciate you and yet another T-shirt. Appropriate to today's meeting. So thank you for that.
I will say that it's hard to compete with him on timing during meetings. So I'm not going to declare that I will do anything to compete with you.
Now, my notes suggest that we would do a reorganization of the board of the dais, but I don't actually think we need to do that. So with that, I will conclude the special meeting at and declared adjourned at 10 minutes after four. And with that, I don't know that I can start the agenda review early. Looking for Janice, can I? All right. So I've just been given different advice. Is that correct? Okay, well, so then with that, we have 20 minutes to converse among yourselves. We'll be back at. There is coffee in the back and we will see you at 4:30. We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of the WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. I'd like to welcome everybody back from winter break. I hope you had a restful one. We'll now resume our board meeting, a cadence for the calendar year 2025. And I'm happy to entertain stories about Christmas after the meeting, but you'll have to look up yours with my grandson if we do that. So just know that's part of the deal. At this time, I'll let you call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of January 14, 2025. Today, we will review the agenda for the January 28, 2025 board meeting. Again, for the record, I will call a roll call vote of the board members. Ms. Jackson Long?
Present.
Ms. Butler?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Dr. Norene?
Present.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
I am present too. So we have all board members here. Okay. As you know, we're going to get we're agenda review is just walking through the agenda. We'll take questions and make sure that we get questions answered for the board in advance of the meeting. We have our normal call to order, pledge of allegiance, all of the reports, which are all very important, but I'm not going to read each one of those to you this evening. And then we go into the consideration of a consent agenda. And the consent agenda process, as you know, is items appear in the consent agenda unless either the chancellor or the board removes them for further conversation at the regular board meeting. So item number two on the consent agenda is the approval of acceptance of transfer in the Maricopa County County Community College District Foundation of an amendment to a grant award from the city of Peoria. The Peoria Arizona Promise Program in the amount of $200,000 for the period from December 17, 2024 through December 31, 2026. Any questions from the board? If not, item number three is approval of acceptance of the transfer again for the Maricopa County Community College District Foundation of a new award from the Diane and Bruce Haley Foundation to support the future 48 accelerator, the amount of $1 million from the period of 12/31/2024 through 1/1/2026. Any questions? Not? Item four is the approval to issue a purchase order to Voss in the amount of $244,375 the cargo container utility infrastructure installation project at Mesa Community College. Number five, approval for the project initiation for the Blueford Hall Aviation Building Remodel in the amount of $6,806,438 at the Chandler Gilbert Community College Williams Campus. Number six, approval of renewing the lease agreement between Arizona Swimming Gaucho's and Glendale Community College, starting in November 1, 2024 and ending on December 31, 2029. Questions from the board? Not item number seven, approval approval of dual enrollment intergovernmental agreement between Maricopa County Community College District and Phoenix College Prep Academy to allow the opportunity to administer dual enrollment courses through June 30, 2025. Questions? Number eight, approval of the aerospace education and flight training group between the Maricopa Community College District for Chandler Gilbert Community College and the University of North Dakota Aerospace Foundation. Item eight, approval of acceptance of a new cooperation cooperative agreement from the U.S. Small Business Administration to Maricopa County Community College District for the Arizona Small Business Development Center Arizona Network, the period of 1/1/25 through 12/31/25 in the amount of $2,787,074. Number 10, approval of support for the minor boundary modification for Apple Inc.'s current subzone 2021A in Mesa, Arizona. Okay. Number 11, approval to support the request for zone site within foreign trade zone number 277 for Blue Polymers LLC in Buckeye. And number 12, approval of proposed course fee change for spring semester fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Can any questions?
Of course, it wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't have a question.
I count you, Dr. Norene.
Okay. Well, first of all, don't we usually get these in February instead of January?
The the course fee changes?
Yeah.
I will turn to who was thinking I'm seeing her. Dr. Armour? Please turn the mic on. There you go.
Ms. Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, students, honored guests. We have course fees that are changing pretty regularly. If there are any of these that you want to defer, I think we can do that. But the the ones that are ready, we try to bring forward as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, it was. Yeah, I just I just always kind of been in the rhythm of getting these in February, but that's okay. I am excited to see that 53 have been removed. Are going to be removed. So that's that's exciting. But the other question is it says that this is a collection for the period of fall 25-26, fall and spring. So are we going to see some more in the spring as well?
I believe there are some more forthcoming. Let's Dr. Warner, if she would like to reply specifically.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. I'm board. I'm Meredith Warner, our interim associate vice chancellor for academic affairs. We, these are for the fall. This is for the 25-26 academic year, but you will receive another set. That will be for the spring semester. So we will do it two semesters, but this is anticipates the fall and the spring.
Okay, so so hopefully the the next one will be shorter.
I anticipate that it will be, but we are actually deleting a number of courses. So because we have been going through our course bank and doing a lot of evaluations of courses, when we delete courses, we delete course fees and you will see those. So they've been sort of exponential in number as a result.
Yay, thank you. Yeah, and I'm about about a third of the way through the 153 pages. So you'll be you'll be you'll be getting my my questions in the next couple days. So thank you.
Watch for those, Dr. Norene, get the replies as quickly as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Norene. It actually gives you an extra month since it's January, not February. Any other comments or questions about consent agenda? If not, we have no non-consent action items at the current time on our agenda. Under first reading information, we'll have the employment and separations report for November 9, 2024 through December 6, 2024. And then we'll go on to monitoring reports, which will be the budget analysis support fund one. Those that information will be forthcoming before our meeting. Any questions or comments on that? Ms. Sullivan?
Regarding the next meeting dates, looking forward to the agenda review in February 11. A couple of us may be on a plane during that time. I don't think that would affect anything, but just definitely I.
Okay, thank you. Before we get to that, we will have our community linkage reports, which is always a highlight at every meeting from the governing board members. And then, as Ms. Sullivan pointed out, we will we have a regular meeting on January 28 at 6:30 here. And then in February 11, the agenda review and those of us that are here will certainly be a part of that. And then our regular board meeting on the 25th of February. So that is the business for the agenda review. Any other questions or concerns? Before we move to our study session. Seeing none, and we are ahead of schedule on this. So we'll move right into our study session, starting with the 2025 Annual Cyber Security Report. And I would like to welcome to the podium our our cybersecurity team. Jess Evans, Chief Information Officer, James Curtin, Senior Associate Counsel, Jamie Spraldon, the Chief Information Security Officer, and Lisa Laird, Interim Director of Risk Management. So I will turn that over to whoever is going to lead the presentation. It looks like Mr. Curtin, you are you're up.
Thank you, President Bitter Smith, members, governing board members, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. I am Jim Curtin, Senior Associate General Counsel for Business Services and Chief Privacy Officer. I'm here tonight with two new people from the incident response team. Dr. Jess Evans and Jamie Spraldon, our new CIO in C.
You can actually stand.
Pardon?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
There you go. We didn't choreograph or rehearse. I apologize. Next time we'll get it right. I don't believe Lisa Laird is here yet, so I may cover her slide footage. She is.
Oh, and as you speak, she is.
Look at that. Perfect timing. I summoned her. So reason we're here tonight, if you recall about a year or so ago, we did a presentation about new regulations from the Federal Trade Commission involving the requirements that higher education institutions need to follow to protect data security and data privacy. And one of those requirements is talking to the governing board and telling you what we're up to. So that's what we will do. I will address simply the legal updates, any regulatory news and such matters. Lisa, interim director of risk management, will talk about our cyber insurance. And then we get to the good stuff with Dr. Evans and Jamie Spraldon about what our cyber and CIO people are doing to protect our data. So as I said, this is something from the excuse me, next slide. So we are following the safeguard rules that was finalized in June of 2023. As for updates, mercifully, there have been not too many. No new regulations really. There was some guidance from the Department of Education in April of 2024, basically piggybacking on the Federal Trade Commission's guidance. And it just requires that the breaches be reported to the Department of Education. That's pretty much it. The real enforcement will will remain with the Federal Trade Commission. So making sure that schools are abiding by these requirements, that's going to be their job. Next slide. So I I went to look for enforcement cases and there are none. There are none under GLPA. But I did find one very recent that is of interest that I think gives us an idea or a template of what enforcement might look like. In October of 2024, Penn State University settled with the Department of Justice on something called a KEY TAM action. KEY TAM is short for a longer Latin phrase meaning action in the name of the king. Lawyers in their Latin. My apologies. So what it means is really a whistleblower case. In this case, the former CIO of the of Penn State University brought an action saying that Penn State had obtained federal grants and research grants for NASA and the Department of Defense. And to get those grants had signed certifications as to whether they abide or comply with cybersecurity requirements of the Department of Defense. And after three years without admitting liability, the university settled and paid a $1.25 million fine, 250,000 of which went to that former CIO. That is something we need to be aware of. The Department of Education really doesn't have its own resources to go enforce these things. So it is something that the Federal Trade Commission has and the Department of Justice, but it's not likely going to come from the Department of Education. Next slide. So developments that are specific to us. You may recall a year ago at the governing board meeting, we settled our we got approval of our settlement with our former cyber insurance carrier, AXA XL, and received a substantial sum of money from that, not as much as we would have liked, but a substantial amount. And we avoided litigation. Those are two big pluses. The only other legal matter, it wasn't really ours, but a vendor of ours called Connect, you may recall, a year ago, we had a data breach that we discussed at Connect affected almost all of our employees and their dependents. But it was broader than that. It wasn't just exclusive to Maricopa. It was all of Connect's customers were put at risk. They settled that case in October. You may have gotten one of the postcards saying that you have rights under the settlements, the class action. We had no involvement in the lawsuit, but we did make sure all of our employees knew about the settlement. In fact, the final review of that settlement will be later this month in a court in Portland, Oregon. So you know, what else do we have going on? Really? It's ongoing. We have a plan in place. We believe we're in compliance with all the regulations. But we can't just stand still and Jess and and Dr. Dr. Evans and and Jamie Spraldon will tell you exactly what we're doing to be doing next. We are looking at other priorities to make it better, to address new threats, and there are a lot of new threats. So at that point, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the cyber insurance because that is also a fluid matter that gets has to be readdressed every year. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. We can take questions at the or do you want to take questions?
Well, let's just stop for a minute and see. Are there questions? Mr. Curtin? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine's short and sweet. Jim had mentioned about the settlement with our prior carrier. They are still our current carrier. So even after the struggle of getting that payment through and us being reimbursed, they still were willing to reenter us. So as we talked about last year at this, well, in in this meeting, it was earlier. But we had three years of a very hard market when it comes to insurance. That means that they're not willing to offer discounts. A lot of times they lower the coverages that they're willing to offer. They have now normalized, which is good for us. We were able in our last insurance renewal in October to increase our limits again, specifically for our ransomware. We are not where we think we should be, depend based on the size of our our organization. And we will continue in this upcoming renewal to work with our broker to see what options are available. What we have found is even though we are able to get more insurance, we are not able to get more ransomware coverage. So this has been a challenge and we're looking, like I said, at other options, whether it be trying to determine whether self-insurance is is an option. Whether we look at a captive type of agreement. So we will continue to work with that and we hope we can move us up to where we need to be.
Any questions for Ms. Sullivan? None? Okay.
I apologize. This next slide here was the same as last year. The IBM annual report did not update these numbers. They believe they're believed to be relatively the same of the cost that what it would cost per breach and per record. And now I will hand that back to Mr. Curtin.
But Dr. Evans, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, chancellors, CEC guests. I'm Dr. Jess Evans. I am the new chief information officer here at the district. I'd like to introduce, before we go into our slides, our new chief information security officer, Jamie Spradlin.
Aye. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Jamie Spradlin, and I am the chief information security officer here at the district office.
Also welcome.
Thank you, Jamie. Today, we're going to discuss what we have learned, what we did, because we weren't actually here when it happened. So our update to the board, we have hired a new CISO you have just met. We attempted to hire a new director of security operations and were successful, and we still have one more position we are seeking to update, which is in identity and access management. We removed global administrative rights to all district employees. What does that mean? That means you can't install your own software on your machine. We accepted into Arizona Homeland Cyber Readiness, and I would like Jamie to take a moment and describe what that is so everybody is aware. This is a major, major positive win for us here at Maricopa. So Jamie, would you expand on that bullet, please?
Yes, I am. So the Arizona Homeland Cyber Readiness Program is a program that the state offers through grants and federal funds that we're able to get five security solutions at the district for free that will be able to roll out to all faculty and staff. It does not include student population. Those tools will enable us to save in an estimated over the next three years, $19 million if we were to go out and procure those tools and solutions on our own. So it's a major step for us to get accepted into the program. We're the biggest institution that the state has in this program. We look forward to seeing what kind of opportunities we will be able to do with this moving forward.
You, Jamie. This is a really major win for the district. Cost avoidance in that number is excellent. So kudos, Jamie. Appreciate that. We've also established a three-year roadmap for implementation on security tools and solutions. And I know this is riveting, so I'll keep going. I just making sure who's listening. Requests for pricing, demo, selection, new vendor, these are things that we're doing because we have some very important business operations to tend to, specifically the fraudulent application process, and we've made significant progress in that space as well. The group that has put this together, they are ready to go to RFP and will be coming back to you to give you more information on that. Next slide. Perfect. So identity and access management will be the next major area where we focus in. That means what role do you have access to getting your data? You know, does a financial person need access to HR, stuff like that? That's what identity and access management is. We will be focusing in on that. We will be looking at purchasing a system, going to RFP. These are things to mitigate risk. This is why we do these things. These are risk mitigation activities. We have some protection from malicious actors. We are constantly monitoring. We're working on a new updated firewall strategy. Firewall is where you use, if you don't know, to protect us on our network, to make sure people are getting in the right doors at the right time. External just described security assessment. This will be something that we will be endeavoring to make sure that our security posture is risk averse and that our data and our constituents are all protected. That is where we are to date. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Dr. Thor?
Thank you. Can you give us an example of one of the five security solutions for staff and faculty?
Absolutely. Jamie?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Thor, so one of the solutions is called Tanium. What it does is it scans the computers to see what malicious files and activity are on the endpoints and helps us remove those proactively rather than reactively after they're already in our environment. So it's proactive measures to put them in place. It also scans to make sure that any applications that are unauthorized, that we pull them off the Maricopa-owned devices. So we only have approved solutions on the endpoints as well. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Evans, you mentioned you are still looking to add one more member to your team.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the timing on that?
That's a great question.
So so is the answer when the right person arrives?
Fair. That's actually a great answer, when the right person arrives. Yes. And as soon as possible, it is our highest priority and our most important hire, and we have had great partnership with HR on this. So I'm excited. We will address it as soon as we possibly can when the right person comes along. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions from other board members? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Curtin, anything? Oh, my gosh. Sorry. Yeah, no, it's not my grandson.
Thank you, board. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. For the record, that's the ASU fight song. Sorry. Okay, seeing no other questions on this topic. Our next topic for our study session is the 25-26 budget overview. Who am I pointing? Oh, I'm starting with Leanne. Okay. As it says, you, Kim, but Leanne, we'll start with you. I suspect this will not be quite as brief as the earlier presentation. Miss Spoh.
Good evening, President Bitter Smith, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez and colleagues and guests. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. Kim Garnio and I are going to be tag teaming this presentation. You usually get the Kim show. Tonight, you have the Kim and Leanne show. So we do have a lot to cover here. We're I'm really excited about this presentation. It is information dense. You will see besides the traditional revenue and expenditure and enrollment information that you've you've seen prior, we have added some additional information in here. So we'll be talking about several initiatives undertaken by the Advisory Budget Council this last fall that we'll be presenting today. And we've also supplemented the presentation with some new ways of looking at data, just for those people who like to look at graphics in addition to or instead of tables of data. So hopefully that's helpful as we go through this. All right, next slide, please. So just to go over our agenda briefly for the evening, I'll share with you an overview of the projects that the Advisory Budget Council has taken on, and I would just like to recognize there are tri-chairs that oversee that group. The tri-chairs are Kim Garnio, Dr. Britt, and and Sasha. So they are here in support. They are also here to answer questions if you were to have any other questions about the decisions made or the recommendations as we go through this information. I'll then, after I go through that, I'll turn it over to Kim, and she will provide the first look at our 2025-2026 general fund budget. I'll talk briefly about enrollment trends. And then following that, Kim is going to spend some time talking about a new budget allocation model. And we'll close with a quick discussion of next steps. So we are going to do our best to leave time at the end for questions, but of course, we always encourage questions along the way as they come up. So happy to take those as they come to you. Next slide, please. So this fall, the the ABC met and decided to take a different approach to the work that we take on, and we identified three big projects to tackle. Those are developing and implementing a capital and technology improvement planning process. So I'll talk a bit about that. Balancing the general fund budget by fiscal 2027, and at the risk of stealing Kim's thunder, you're going to see a plan to actually balance it in fiscal '26. I'm really proud of that plan. And then lastly, and perhaps most importantly, developing a new budget allocation model for our general fund resources. So this is something that was included in the district's strategic So this is something that was included in the district's strategic plan. The deadline was actually December of twenty-two thousand and three, so we are behind schedule, but I'm pleased to present that plan this evening. We asked our members of the Advisory Budget Council, there are more than two dozen people that sit on the council. It is a shared governance council. We asked them to self-identify into those three groups that the projects I just discussed. We had check-ins throughout the fall, so met as those small groups, also met as a team multiple times. And final support for what you hear tonight was provided by A B C to move all of them forward.
Leanne, could I just ask, in terms of that team, they are members, are they their combination of administration, faculty? Can you give us a substance of the kinds of folks that are on that team?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, President Bittersmith. So we have, I think there are three presidents, if I'm remembering correctly. We have three presidents on there. We have four faculty members. We have staff from district office and we have staff from colleges as well. Okay, next slide, please. So I will say the easiest of the three projects was the capital and technology improvement planning process. So I led that. Perhaps maybe started easy in my first year here. Really, the purpose of this is to develop a multi-year capital plan. So we'd like to look to in the future, having a three- to five-year capital plan. But when I say capital, I don't just mean physical infrastructure. I also mean technology infrastructure. Those projects generally being one-time investment of significant resources generally compete for the same resources. So it makes sense to look at them as kind of a pool. We also have fund balances, so money that could be spent once in a number of funds. We have funds sitting in our plant fund, our general fund. We have some HERF funds remaining, funds two oh seven and three oh one, STEM funds and our auxiliary funds. So when we look at all of those things combined and always being respectful that we we need to spend each dollar in the way that it may be restricted statutorily, there's a good amount of resources there that we can put towards these efforts. So we really think it's it's the timing is right to develop and implement a process that would look to spend these resources intelligently, but also weight the projects against one another. So we've developed a process where district office, but more importantly, the colleges can submit projects for consideration, both from technology and from physical infrastructure. The deadline for those submissions is the end of this month. And then a group of technology experts will be looking at the technology projects. I think the T E G, the Technology Advisory Group meets tomorrow to perhaps consider what that group looks like moving forward. And then a secondary group will look at the physical infrastructure or building projects. There has been a rubric that was worked on by the A B C that where we would evaluate each of these projects. So there would be kind of an apples-to-apples comparison and then a prioritization. And then what we would look to do is, like I said, develop that three-to-five-year plan, because many of these probably can't be done in one year. So that's more to come and we hope to have more to report on that when we're back in front of you in March. Next slide, please. All right. And then next, I'm going to turn it over to Kim. She is going to talk about the general fund balancing efforts that are part of Agenda Item Three. And she will also talk about the new budget allocation model.
Thank you. Before we leave, any questions for Leanne? Dr. Thor?
I didn't realize we still had HERF funds. How much do we have and how long do we have to spend?
Dr. Thor, thank you for that question. When that slide was put together, I was actually in my head thinking, I think we spent all of that. I think there is very, very little money left in HERF. So I apologize for that being on the list, but there is there is money in all of those other funding sources. Thank you.
Maybe one clarification I'd add to that. So when I think about the HERF, this is the first thing I saw when I flipped the page and I went, why is that on there? I think this really can be also related to the the dollars that we have set aside in the general fund that were from the HERF recoveries for lost tuition and a couple of other things that we do have designated for system-wide activities related to students, whether it's admissions or however it is we end up spending that. So I think in my head, that's what I'm thinking of when we do the HERF. We probably need to rename it. It came from those dollars, but they are no longer federal dollars. They are not restricted in purpose and there are no time restrictions to them either.
Thank you.
And Leanne, my apologies for not standing up here with you when I sort of so my apologies. President Bittersmith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of C E T and colleagues and guests. I'm Kim Garnio. I'm the Vice Chancellor for Business Services. And again, to echo what Leanne said, we appreciate the time to get in front of you all to start our budget conversations for fiscal year twenty-six. And I'm grateful for Leanne's presence and my not you all not having to listen to me for the next ninety minutes. So that doesn't frighten anybody. I'm not sure what does. So we'll start with our first look at the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-six. This is kind of in concert with what we've been doing in prior years where we come in January. We do our first look primarily about the general fund. We'll come back again in March. We'll update any new information we have regarding the general fund. So you'll hear me say it probably a couple of times that, Elsa, can you go back a slide, please? I want everybody looking at that first. Elsa? Can you go back a slide, please? Thank you. So then we'll come back in March, do any updates. We'll get property tax, levies and such set or evaluation set on February tenth. So we'll have those kinds of updates and then we'll talk about the rest of the funds that we have, since we have more than just the general fund. So launching in, we're going to look at budget priorities and assumptions that we used in looking at really the the twenty-six budget. And then also as we were looking at how to balance the general fund for either fiscal year twenty-six or twenty-seven or some combination. So we wanted to balance the recurring budget with recurring revenues. You've heard me say before, that means your ongoing revenues cover your ongoing expenditures. We have other types of one-time activities, whether they be one-time dollars coming in or one-time dollars going out or non-recurring types of activities. We obviously want to fund year five of the compensation plan. That is the the end of the five-year plan, which should be in fiscal year twenty-six. Because of Prop four eighty-six and for another reason, we are not recommending tax or tuition increases for fiscal year twenty-six. The other reason that I want to share is we also want to make sure that we are using all of our existing resources and revenue streams to the best of our ability and then before we recommend any increases to tuition and property taxes. And so that kind of goes back to a part of Leanne's presentation of we're going to do a full analysis of all of those balances, figure out what they are allocated to, what they're not allocated to, and determine how we use those to the best of the system's abilities before we target the general fund for revenue increases in that vein. Next slide, please, Elsa. So this format should look familiar to everyone. This is the multi-year general fund projection that we started, I think, might be three years ago now. That's everything escapes me at this point in time. And what we'll focus on is fiscal year twenty-six. And the most exciting thing I can point out is that when you look at that green number, three rows up from the bottom in fiscal year twenty-six, you see that as zero. That means that we have a structurally balanced budget if all of the pieces above that zero come together. And so I want to walk us through the revenue pieces first and then we'll talk about the expenditure pieces. So for revenues, the first line that I'll draw your attention to is reallocating the tax shift of fourteen million dollars. So everybody is aware that a handful of years ago, we put in place a tax shift moving secondary tax levy from debt service to the general fund and designating that for capital purposes. And that was really about funding our capital needs, hopefully either putting off a bond, maybe never having to do a bond, depending on what needs come our way in the future. And what we are able to do, though, is we, all of those dollars don't have to be designated to capital. When we were first pitching this, the first question I got was, are we allowed to do that? And the answer is yes, we are allowed to do that. We are the ones who designate those dollars to go to capital. They are still our primary tax levy. We have the liberty of doing what we want with our tax levy. So in fiscal year twenty-six, we were slated to do, or we are slated to do, a tax shift of eighteen and a half million dollars from that debt service levy. And what this is proposing is that only four and a half of that eighteen and a half million go to capital and the fourteen million stay in the general fund to help us balance the general fund budget. With this approach, we would still have approximately sixty-three point one million in revenues every year in capital programs. The highest amount, just a data point, highest amount of capital spending in the past five years occurred in fiscal year twenty-four at fifty-seven million. Even with that, we still believe that sixty-three point one million in annual ongoing revenues up until fiscal year twenty-eight is sufficient. So thirteen point nine million is planned for the final tax shift in fiscal year twenty-eight. There is zero scheduled for twenty-seven. And so at that point, we would get to, my math is correct, because I thought I wrote it down somewhere, we'd be about eighty million dollars a year in annual ongoing revenue for capital programs by the time we get to fiscal year twenty-eight. So that's the first line of the the fourteen million there of new revenues or repurposed revenues, maybe. The next line there in red is to reallocate state STEM dollars at one point six million. Based on state statute, we are allowed to transfer up to twenty percent of our total STEM appropriation from the state for operating aid purposes that becomes unrestricted in nature. And so we are proposing as part of the budget balancing that twenty percent, which we think is about twenty, I'm sorry, one point six million for fiscal year twenty-six, we obviously won't know until the state passes a budget. Should take bets on when that might happen. I don't know if anybody's going to guess before May, but so we'll have that number will be finalized once that is completed. I will point out also, actually, no, I'm not going to point anything out. I'm going to move us to expenditures now. And expenditures, I'm going to stop at the top with or start at the top with required of a negative three hundred and eighty-two thousand. The reason why that is negative is Arizona State Retirement System reduced the contribution rate for both employees and employers. So it's wonderful for employees and our paycheck starting July one. But it's also good for us as an employer and that saves us about one point eight million, I'm sorry, one point zero eight million, so just a little over a million dollars a year. So that is why that number ends up being negative. The other amounts that are built into there, you may remember from prior years, includes increases that are needed to fund scholarships, president scholarships, honor scholarships, the scholarships that really are, if you qualify for it, you get it. So it's somewhat of an entitlement to Arizona High School graduates. So we need to continue to fund that. And then the other piece that is in there are any salary adjustments and educational adjustments that are due to employees meeting certain educational requirements and receiving a salary change. The other ongoing expenditures really is year five of the strategic compensation plan. So that should be familiar to everyone. I'm going to skip the budget reduction for just a second and go to Prop two oh seven bridge funding of five million dollars. So this is proposing that in addition to the five million we already are using from Prop two oh seven to bridge the general fund, we add an additional five million to that, bringing the total to ten million dollars each year. I I get asked a lot, you know, if we're going to do that for all of the future years. And the answer is yes, this is all about budgeting and budget speak. Once it's in there, it becomes part of the base budget in the next year unless we take a different action. So just to clarify kind of what is up there and what those items mean. The net result of all of these proposals is a budget reduction of one point three million dollars. And we are proposing that that is coming out of the district-wide business unit, not putting any reductions to the colleges or the district office divisions. One other thing I want to address before we move on from this slide, other expenditures ongoing, you'll see, starting in fiscal year twenty-seven, it's about seventeen million dollars per year. And the the question comes up, why is it not twenty-five million? So the seventeen million was the result of the original proposal that was presented to the board a few years ago, handful of years ago. I like handful because it could be three, it could be four, it could be five. And I can't remember, so I don't want to look it up. But anyway, insight into my brain, sorry about that. The the seventeen million dollars came from that proposal where it was with an extra investment in a five-year plan, which again, we're talking about year five in fiscal twenty-six. There should then be a place where we can get back to a more normal cadence of increases in the two to three percent range. That's where the seventeen came from. All of that being said, there probably could be an asterisk on every single one of those because, of course, we're in the 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 planning stages of what the next five-year compensation plan might look like. We have that. That will be coming down the pipe. We also know that that original compensation plan was about getting us closer to market. In the five years since then, we've had a pandemic, which has likely upended the market, let alone inflation. We haven't talked about inflation yet. So all of those things will have to be considered when we look at what the next five-year plan looks like. And then the other thing that we have in there is the benefit plan issue that we have currently, where our self-insured benefit plan is under underfunded. And so we have taken steps to increase the employees' contributions. We also are going to have to take steps to increase the employer contributions. So that's going to end up being at least on one of those lines of increases in expenditures in future years. So I say that to point out that you'll see we have nice green zeros from two thousand twenty-six later. You'll see right above that, we have a budget balancing line, which means we need to either increase revenues or decrease expenditures. Those dollar amounts that you see there ranging from a little over half a million to one point six million. The highest number there is less than point two percent of total revenues. So all things being equal, those are things we will likely be able to manage within the budget as we get closer to those years. Our revenue projections are only projections too, by the way. So there's a lot of things that are going to happen, I think, in those future years. But I I have to emphasize the point that that seventeen million dollars is likely not going to stay seventeen million dollars. So we will still have more work to do when we get to fiscal year twenty-seven to continue to maintain a structurally balanced budget. I also want to share with everyone that that doesn't mean we're only balanced for one year necessarily. This is what everybody does all the time, every year. You look at your revenues, you look at your expenditures, you work through those differences. That's how you maintain a balanced budget from year to year to year. But we have to start somewhere and I, for one, am very excited that we went from a twenty million dollar deficit to potentially a zero deficit for fiscal year twenty-six, which to me kind of levels the playing field for a whole lot of other conversations that we probably get to have, maybe starting for twenty-seven budget development. So. Okay, I'm going to go on to the next slide. And so notes on the general fund projections, and I'm just going to make sure I covered all of these because I likely did. The comments on the numbers, it's kind of hard to talk about the numbers and and not be on the numbers page. So again, keeping that the portion of the tax shift in the general fund is entirely within our purview. This does maintain the intent to continue to decrease the overall tax rate for, and that is about that tax shift, because this is, all of these talking points are about the tax shift. And that was the resolution that was approved by the governing board on May twenty-fifth of twenty-two thousand and one. Again, I talked about highest level of capital expenses and I talked about the, that is where I have the eighty million dollars. I should have looked at the next slide. So that confirms that my math is maybe correct today. And if you can go to the next slide, please, Elsa, we have a little bit more on revenues. Now, one more back, sorry. I didn't look up and see where you were. Again, reallocating the same, the state STEM funds, I do have the statutory reference there. Budget reduction, again, taken at the district-wide level. You'll see in a little bit when we talk about the new budget allocation model, future reductions, should they need to occur, will really occur at the top of the model and flow through. So we no longer are doing across-the-board budget reductions, if you will, or we don't have to. And then two oh seven bridge funding is just speaking more to that. So Elsa, now you can go to the next slide, please. And now we'll actually get into our first look at the general fund sources. These schedules should look familiar as well. So for fiscal year twenty-six, where we think the numbers are going to lie, primary tax levy is where we are, what our levy is for fiscal year twenty-five. And then we'll add in approximate new construction of fourteen point seven million. Again, we will get final numbers on February tenth. SRP and LOE is included there with a slight decrease. SRP and LOE is all about their valuation. So that's why that number can go up and down, but we'll have final numbers again later. Tuition and fees assumes a two percent enrollment growth, so an increase there. Again, reallocating the state STEM dollars. Interest income, we did increase this. This is one of those ones that always gives me a lot of anxiety because we have had great interest income in the past two years. But we're not guaranteed we're going to have great interest income. We had many, many years of, you know, zero percent interest or point one percent interest in the pittance. That's how our budget actually got to three hundred thousand dollars of interest income. So we're trying to split the difference and get to an increase up to about two million dollars. I'm comfortable with that, certainly in the monthly burn report. If something changes in fiscal year twenty-six, then we will certainly report out whatever those changes are. And then miscellaneous another, uh, continues to be about the same. Uh, so total revenue works, we're anticipating for fiscal year twenty six could be just under seven hundred and ninety eight million dollars. Uh, next slide, please. And we're going to stick with revenue for just a couple more, or, uh, I think it's a couple more slides, maybe four more slides. Uh, primary levy, uh, tax levy history. Just wanted to illustrate, uh, for everyone where we are in our levy versus our levy limit. Um, and this is all primary taxes. So this will include anything we're designated for capital purposes. Um, in the budget schedule, we always report out where, where we are under the limit. Um, and you'll see that from, uh, fiscal year fifteen to fiscal year twenty five. Uh, we have increased our, um, unused levy capacity by about sixty three million dollars. And so we're about, uh, twelve point three percent under the maximum levy. Anyway, I don't think I have anything else I want to say about that one. Um, so let's go on to the next slide. Oh, actually, one thing I will add. Just to clarify, we have not maximized our property tax levy since fiscal year two thousand and ten. So it's been now fifteen years that we will not have maximized our levy. Prior to that, if I could remember correctly, generally we did maximize our levy. Each year. So if we go to the next slide, we can look at the tax rate history, which is, um, another important element, just a different look at our taxes. We levy a dollar amount. That dollar amount is what gets converted into a tax rate and that's the tax rate you see here. Um, our combined tax rate for both primary, secondary, and the capital shift is part of, um, the, the primary levy in total. Um, so on the previous slide, again, that's, it's, it's in both pieces. It has declined twenty seven point three percent since two thousand and fifteen. Um, some of that is due to declining debt service prior to when we implemented the shift. Because we were not doing the shift when we first started. You know, your bond program is always in a bell curve and we've been on the downside of that bell curve for a number of years now. Um, but so we are still continuing to allow the, uh, actual rate to decline over time, which is what was intended. Sullivan? Yes?
It may be inappropriate for me to ask this question. Uh, as you move forward in your projections. Are you at any point recommending that we evaluate our tax position?
President Bitter Smith, Mrs. Sullivan, um, I would say yes, I think it would be a good idea for us to do that. And we're not recommending it for fiscal year twenty six because I'm very well aware of what we told our voters when we went to the ballot in November of last year, and I don't think any of us want to, um, betray that, uh, those, those comments, those promises, if you will. Um, but I think as a system, so, so when we talk about the budget model in, in a, a couple of segments in our presentation. It is all about moving resources around. But none of that does anything to address the adequacy of the resources of the system overall. And I think over the last several years, certainly the handful of years. We are trying to do everything we can to move things around to accommodate what the system needs. But I, I can imagine that in fiscal year twenty seven, we're probably going to have more conversations about whether or not the resources coming into the system are actually adequate for what we need to do everything that we want to do as a system or need to do as a system. Yes, there's probably some blend in there, right? So that answers your question.
Thank you, yes. I, I mean, I appreciate and understand where we are this year. And possibly even next year. It certainly appreciate our political environment. Um, it's our place to be courageous and take risks sometimes. I just wondered if that was in your forecasting for us to convene or have ABC convene around that conversation.
So I would say not in, not in anything that you're seeing in these slides. We, um, can and have kind of played with that, that multi-year schedule about what would happen if we had um, a, a small tuition increase, what would happen if we had a property tax increase. So we can provide all of that information. Um, I, uh, we just, we didn't want to do that for today. We wanted to leave everything as to be determined. Um, because none of those things are set in stone either.
Correct.
I can plug all those numbers into that schedule, but I have to remind everyone, uh, both of those take board action. And that would be up to the, the board to really decide if that was the direction that we wanted to go. So, so I do think future conversations are necessary. Certainly within ABC, I think certainly within, um, system leadership and then certainly with the governing board. And maybe at some point we can, you know, really sit down and plan out. What do we think maybe the next two or three or four years look like? And maybe that's a conversation we can have. Don't think historically we've done that overly great. We can have them within the system. But I don't know that we necessarily have them with the board and maybe that's, yeah, it's a good thing for us to do.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think duly noted, we'll be aboard together for two years, so maybe something for us to consider it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. So our next slide is, um, a look at tuition. Um, and this is our current tuition rate compared with inflation indexed. Uh, an inflation index tuition rate. I struggle with how to put those words together correctly. Um, but you'll notice on the next slide, Elsa, you don't need to go to the next slide. Um, we're putting this analysis together based on the policy change that was made um, by the governing board, um, I think it was August, um, of this year. And, um, so under that policy, we are required to do an analysis every year and compare tuition against um, some sort of an inflation index, uh, which is primarily happy higher education price, um, index. And, um, so we've done that. This chart here is reflective of um, a five year average of that, uh, happy index. And so based on, on, on that analysis alone, we could conceivably charge as much as a hundred and fourteen dollars per credit hour, just based on inflation. Not even considering if there were any other needs that we would be covering with those tuition dollars. If you go to the next slide for me, Elsa. So I, I just want to be very clear that while a tuition increase could be justified on the basis of inflation. And we aren't recommending it again for the same reasons as we talked about with property tax increase. Um, that really we, you know, we asked, uh, the voters for, um, support in November and we got that. Um, and then also, uh, per some previous comments. We want to make sure we're looking at all of our balances and our revenue sources to make sure we're using them in the best way possible. And, um, I think what I'll, I'll share is that, you know, over the years, I think we've done that in different ways. But I think this is really about a more, much more comprehensive look at all of those pieces that I don't really think we've done that. Maybe exceedingly well in the past, so that, that's what our efforts will be in the coming, uh, months. If we go to the next slide, Elsa, we'll look at, um, general fund uses. Um, and this is the last slide of this section. Again, this format should look somewhat familiar. Um, so the total revenue that we are projecting is just under seven hundred and ninety eight million. Um, expenditures are coming in at a total of seven hundred and ninety eight million, actually they balance. Um, that includes all of the components that we've talked about over the last few slides. Um, compensation plan, bridge funding. And then the small budget reduction taken from the, this, uh, district wide bucket. Um, and that does show our, uh, estimated any fund balance of a hundred and seventy seven million dollars. And that equates to about two point seven months of expenditures. Um, one thing I do want to draw your attention to is, um, we have at this point zero uncommitted fund balance. Um, you may also notice that three lines up from there, additional operating reserves is about two percent. We had been carrying that at six percent. Um, that got reduced to bring the, uh, uncommitted fund balance to zero. It doesn't make sense to me that we would have an, uh, overcommitted or negative fund balance in our designations. Um, and really that is a result of the quasi Meyer judgment and the withholding of property taxes. So I think we'll have more conversations on that in the future, but probably not, uh, this evening. But that is why that results in zero or, um, only two percent of additional operating reserves. Any questions on my section before I turn it over to Leanne for enrollment?
Board members? If not, thank you.
Thank you. So let's talk a little bit about enrollment data. If you go to the next slide, Elsa. Uh, this table looks familiar. This is something that's been presented, I think, for a number of years. So this is a five year history by each of our colleges of, uh, full-time student equivalents with a total at the bottom, including estimated numbers for the current academic year that we're in. Um, so, uh, the, if you look at just over to the right in twenty three, twenty four, we had just over fifty five thousand footsie. We're now at, uh, an estimated fifty six to sixty one, but an, uh, an eleven hundred, um, footsie increase. Um, however, when you look at this history, which really dates back to, uh, to the pandemic era, we're still down fifteen percent from where we, where we had been. So I would say this is still, um, uh, we're having some steady growth, but we are still recovering from the pandemic. Um, next slide. Similarly with headcount, you'll see the same trends. Um, so, uh, not quite, or this recovery here has been, um, a, a little faster with our headcount. So we were only down nine percent from our fiscal nineteen to twenty numbers. Um, the growth year to year is about, uh, sixty seven hundred, if I did that math right. Um, so continuing to grow, but still not, uh, not out of the woods from where we had been. Back in nineteen twenty. Um, and one of the reasons I think it's important to look at this data and the next, I'm going to show some additional historical data. Is that as we move into a discussion about the budget allocation model, which, um, which is, uh, there's a lot of data on that that we're, uh, looking forward to sharing. Um, you'll recall, um, back in the, uh, the spring of twenty twenty, a decision was made to not reduce college budgets because we didn't know how long lasting that would be. Um, so we spent essentially suspended the existing, uh, budget for a college funding model, hence the need for a new model. Um, but as we look at some of the data and look at it over a longer time horizon, I think it's important to put that into context of the budget allocation model we'll be discussing. So if you could go on to the next slide, please, Elsa.
Leanne, as you do that, just one quick question. Um, obviously we have, we know what those numbers are in comparable institutions across the country. Um, and not, we're not apples to apples in any situation, but any sense of, are we kind of, are we ahead of the curve, behind the curve, kind of where the curve is headed in terms of those comps, in terms of enrollment trends and footsie trends?
President Bitter Smith, that, that is a great question. I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm looking at Dr. Armour to see if she has anything off the top of her. Something that we're, we're happy to research and see how we compare.
Just out of information, thank you.
Um, so this is a, two different charts. The left is footsie and the right is headcount going back over a ten year time horizon rather than the five year time horizon. And looking at it graphically, which I think sometimes helps to see the trends a little bit more clearly. Um, as a note in the last two slides, if you read the footnotes, um, our high point for both footsie and headcount were in twenty eleven. So there was this drop that we're seeing had actually started before what's shown here. Between twenty fifteen and really the pandemic. We saw an eleven point four percent drop in footsie and a nine point three percent drop in headcount. So there was a trending, uh, downward during that period. And then we see in both cases, a precipitous drop, um, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty two. Uh, we are certainly recovering. We've regained from the two thousand fifteen numbers. We have regained, uh, four point nine percent of footsie and six point one percent of headcount. Um, but I think it's important to see this trend overall. We still have not fully recovered to our pre-pandemic levels and not to our higher point from ten years ago. Um, next slide, please. And then just another way to look at the data. Again, this is a, a ten year time horizon. So if you look at it by institution or by college. Um, what this shows is comparing it to twenty fifteen, how do we look in twenty twenty four? What percentage of the student population we were serving at each of our colleges in twenty fifteen are we serving today? Um, so you'll see, uh, Australia Mountain and Chandler Gilbert. I think it's important to note, those are two of the institutions that we've talked about as not being funded at the same level as our other institutions. Um, have nearly fully regained their footsie and they've actually exceeded their headcount over that ten year time horizon. Um, and then you can see from there that some of our other colleges have not had that same recovery over that period. Um, so, uh, so I thought it was interesting to look at the data this way as well. This is a new way of viewing it. So if it's helpful, great. If not, we'll, uh, we'll ax it for next year. Any questions about any of that data?
Any questions? Mine isn't a question, it's a comment. It, it, so to the question we just asked about, uh, or Miss Bitter Smith asked. Uh, and even looking at this. Is there a way to do analysis around the, this data that could inform strategies? Uh, uh, as we pinpoint through analysis what some of the challenges are? Or are you doing that? I mean, is that somebody else's responsibility? I, I don't know, but it seems that to appreciate the data, it's important to understand the data. And to solve or create solutions, you need to have that information. So this is not a criticism. I think what is presented here is actually congratulations. I'm so grateful for all of this information. Um, but that is my, my question to you on either next steps or is that in progress?
Uh, uh, Mrs. Sullivan, I think that's a great question. Um, this is the thirty thousand foot view. Um, both of these, these graphs that I, the, or I guess the four graphs that, that you've looked at this evening, the thirty thousand foot view. And I think, right, you learn a lot more looking at the details of that. So I think we need to think about the types of questions that we want to ask and if we want to dig into that data and how we think it can best inform our future decisions. So absolutely, I think this is maybe the beginning of a, a, a new way of looking at it.
Yeah, I wasn't imposing that on you. It was just a matter of, um, appreciating, for example, the analysis of dropping. How are we nationally? Is this a, a financial challenge for people? Is this a, you know, to get to more of, not so much the number details, but again, the strategy details or thoughtful. That would go into either policy or decision making. So anyway, thank you.
And I was using the royal we, so I didn't, I didn't necessarily mean we, him and me.
Yeah, it's your job. Yeah. And Mrs. Sullivan, that was kind of the genesis of my question. Not that, that we are identical to any other entity, but it's just kind of helpful to know what the reality is out there across the country. Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, I'm President, excuse me, President Bitter Smith, to your question earlier about how we compare to other institutions. Um, community and colleges across the country have increased one point six percent over this time last year. Uh, if you tease out the vocational programs or the career and technical education programs, they've seen a sixteen percent increase since fall of two thousand nineteen. Whereas the transfer, the typical, uh, traditional transfer route has continued to see, uh, they're still about fifteen to eighteen percent below where they were in, uh, the fall of nineteen or two thousand nineteen. Um, we haven't teased out the data here. It would be interesting to see if we follow that same trend. I suspect we're probably, uh, closely aligned to that, given the nature of our programs. And it, I mean, the, the pandemic has impacted the way people work, right? And, and in our state, we're the largest provider of workforce development and we're, uh, we're a hub for innovation and advanced manufacturing, semiconductor industry. So the places where we're growing are in the career and technology case right now.
Thank you. And to that end, uh, the more university systems are entering into the workforce space by their own definition. Uh, it would be interesting to look at comparative data to that, to glean whether there is an absorption of some of our students versus, um, where, where they're going. So to, to add comment to that. Because at some of the tables I'm at, I'm hearing universities both comment about pluses and minuses in that same space. So just curious, but thank you for pulling that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, do we have a sense, and maybe we don't, but this is kind of along the lines of what is our competition and where, where might our potential students be going elsewhere? Do we have a sense of our, like, what has the growth been in private educational settings that might be viewed as our competition for certification programs that we're offering? Do we have any idea of how we would compare as a county, ba- compared to other areas, you know, who's coming in and offering those private, you know, for-profit kind of settings versus what we are seeing? Um, you know, obviously they have more, usually more advertising dollars and more opportunity to sort of, you know, potentially, um, you know, get more of our students. Do we have any sense of what that, what those numbers might look like?
Uh, Ms. Butler, I, I do not right now. At the top of my head, it's not something that we've researched or at least my team hasn't reached for research, but certainly happy to take that away and, and, um, and look into that and report back.
President Bitter Smith, I can answer.
Dr. Gonzalez.
Of course, into that question, um, Ms. Butler, uh, I, I used. Ms. Butler, I I used to sit on a commission for post secondary education. And there was a person who represented a private institutions in the state, the ones that you've just described. I was surprised at the number of institutions that that person was representing until I drove home from Grand Canyon University back to Gateway Community College that day. And it's, it was roughly two hundred and twenty five to two hundred and thirty institutions of a private nature operating inside our state that are direct competitors with us. So when you see somebody who is offering a degree or certificate and becoming an airplane technician, motorcycle technician, HVAC, sonography, and you name it, there's, there are private entities for each and every single one of the programs that we offer, and they are in direct competition with us. Am I surprised? Because they charge ten times the the cost that we charge.
I think we do a much better job. Yeah. And I just wonder how that would compare if we have a comparison. Are we dealing with more of that kind of a competition setting than other places? Be interesting to know.
Well, I think, Ms. Butler, you asked a little bit about the marketing component, too. I'm wondering, Lindsay, I guess I'm going to ask you, not for tonight, but do we have data? Do we monitor what our competitors are doing in general from a marketing perspective? Right. And that digital information might be, might be interesting for the board to see at some point, if that's, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Kim. I'm going to stand next to her in solidarity.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move into, I think for me, what is maybe a little bit of an exciting adventure for Maricopa. I I'm thinking everybody probably remembers that I'm going to use handful, because that's the easiest thing to use, handful of years ago. We tried to develop a new budget allocation model, and I lovingly refer to it as having gone down in flames, and it went down in flames. And so I'm actually kind of excited that I get to stand in front of you all today and present a model that has actually made it this far in the process, because the other one didn't even make it anywhere close to this stage. So it is, it is, I think, a shift for Maricopa, so it's not without its challenges. We'll talk a little bit about what those challenges are, but it's, it's just, it's exciting for somebody like me to be able to see that we're, I feel like we're making some progress when it can be very difficult. So as Leanne shared at the beginning, ABC did spend fall with one of its groups focused on developing an allocation model. And also, if you can go the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about some background. As was referenced earlier, it is in this system wide strategic plan. We were to have it ready for implementation for fiscal year twenty four, if I remember correctly. One of the purposes behind that was to more equitably fund our colleges. We've been talking about Chandler and Australia for years, not having the same funding that other colleges did. We put together some data that kind of think more starkly presented that that was a reality. And we also want to ensure we're equitably treating our students. So we've oftentimes, or in the last couple of years, and you'll see some of this at the end, we do an adaptive budget per footsie when it ranges all over the place. And we we do talk about have colleges that have dollars and colleges that don't have dollars, the haves and the have nots. It doesn't really serve our students and it doesn't treat our students equitably either. So so that was really the why behind all of this. How, again, using shared governance, the model was developed by a subteam of the Advisory Budget Council and then supported by the full council. The subteam did follow the guiding principles that were approved by the Chancellor's Executive Council in January of twenty twenty three. When developing the model, those are included in a later slide. And then the what, the model is primarily based on data and doesn't rely on past budget practices, which you'll see was one of the guiding principles, I believe. So next slide, please, Elsa. I'm going to talk about a whole lot of stuff where I get to any numbers. Everybody just wants to get to the numbers. So the guiding principles that C E C approved are in front of you. They're around fiscal responsibility, student success, organizational cooperation, transparency and innovation. The one I will focus on tonight is transparency, and this is because of that previous model that went down in flames. One of the comments we made was if it has an N in the equation, it's a no go, because everybody's not going to understand what N is, me first. And so let's make it something that everybody who's looking at it can follow what the steps are. And it is fully transparent as to how we got to the end number. So everybody always likes to race to that end number, but we want to talk about how we got there first. So that is really one of the things that I think is a commendable item in this approach. You will see, I I believe anyway, that that allocation model, you can step right through it all on your own. And I think every one of us can do that. So we'll go to the next slide and we'll talk about, actually go back one, I think you, don't look up Elsa, I should look up. Interest, apologies, interest and considerations, again, interest, it needs to be simple, equitable, sustainable. We don't want something that we have to wholesale change every year. That doesn't create any stability within the system. Considerations included, we're to include some level of social vulnerability of our students. Minimize to the best of our ability negative impact colleges in the system. Create a base allocation for operations. Every college needs to keep their doors open. So what might that look like? Do not use square footage. That was something that was used in the old, in the model that went down in flames. So we're like, don't use that one. Let's come up with something different. We also wanted to, the the model we currently have in place that we have suspended, use just straight footsie. And I think we, as a system, have acknowledged that all footsie is not created equal. So that was where we got to the concept of using weighted footsie. And then we also had the conversation about headcount for student services. And we've talked about this a number of times in the past that we do a lot of things based on footsie, which are total credit hours divided by thirty, regardless of how many people fit within that thirty credit hour definition. And when we provide services to students, we're providing services to the individual students. So when you have a lot of part time population, which we do, and you're providing services, you're having to provide services to all three of those students that make up one footsie. So we're trying to kind of divide and conquer a little bit in that we've got some element that is based on footsie. And we have an element that is based on headcount, which hopefully pulls those two pieces together. I also want to acknowledge that we wanted to include Rio in the model. We didn't want to have a nine colleges are doing this, one college is doing that. But we also acknowledge that Rio fundamentally has a different business model. So the approach that you will see that was taken was that we could look at weighting their counts. Let's see, headcount, we'll talk about that in a second, differently, but that they would be included in the full model. So if we go to the next slide, we're going to jump into what the actual methodology is. So there aren't numbers attached to this. This is about stepping through what the formula is in order to get to that end result. So the very top line is what the total district wide budget is. And I could look back at my slides, but you'll see me flip my papers around. I think it was seven hundred and ninety million dollars was our total expenditures on the expenditure slide. That's what would be at that total top district wide budget. Because typically our budget includes a carry forward amount that really is a use of budget from the prior year, use of fund balance. We can take that out off the top. We're also going to take out anything that is required or recommended budget items that can't be allocated to a college. When we asked the board to support an action item for salaries, salary adjustments in May, we don't know when we adopt budget, because you guys adopt the budget and then you consider approval of the salary changes. We don't know when we adopt the budget, where those dollars are going to go. We actually won't know until around July first or sometime in there, once those allocations are actually made, because they are done person by person, employee by employee, not Chandler Gilbert gets this and Australia Mountain gets this. It is really about the individual people. So that will be held in the central bucket until it gets allocated and then it will be moved out to the different locations. From that, we're going to take a district budget allocation, which will be less than twenty percent. How it is set now is, and the the group did go back and look historically, and on average, the district wide budget amount is about eight percent. The types of things that are included in that district wide budget allocation, scholarships, we talked about needing to increase the amount for scholarships, professional growth for employees, tuition waivers, budget for bad debt, honors program, there's a handful of things that, again, just like the compensation adjustments, we don't know where theirs are, where those are going to go. There may be one year where Glendale has a huge influx of honor students when they didn't have it before. That's where the dollars need to go, not based on an allocation that we made to them. So that tries to keep the college budgets whole, if you will. The next line down there is the district office budget. So that historically has been somewhere between ten point seven and eleven percent. It is currently at ten point seven percent. But our intention and our desire is, is to get that to ten percent. And we will likely do that over a couple, three years. So where through the formula, the district office budget might have grown, the intention is we'll keep it, we'll hold it steady. And then that percentage will decrease until we get to ten percent. And then, you know, both of those are, there is an opportunity then for district office and district wide budgets to adjust based on system growth that hasn't necessarily been in place previously. Once you take the district budget allocation out of the district wide budget, that difference then becomes the college allocation pool. And that sets the stage for the next part of the allocations. And also, if you can go to the next slide, please. So we start at the the top of this, so kind of above that Maricopa grant allocation is that district wide, I'm sorry, the the college budget allocation pool. Off the top of that, we're going to take out the eight and a half million dollars for Maricopa grants. Those will be for fiscal year twenty six reallocated based on updated data. If I'm not mistaken, the last time we did that allocation was in two thousand and sixteen. Maricopa County might have had some shifts in population since then, so those dollars will be recalculated. Those dollars get allocated to the colleges base. And the admonition from since two thousand and sixteen, when it was originally added to college basis, the colleges can't reduce those dollars. Those are set aside. We want to make sure at least eight and a half million dollars of the system budget is spent in for those purposes. Colleges can add additional dollars to those. They just can't move them out. So then the next step is, there was a lot of conversation about a base allocation. We had it in one of our slides as well. Where the group landed was a fourteen million dollar flat operational base per college. There was lots of conversation about this one. There was conversation, should there be one allocation for small colleges, a different allocation for large colleges? Should we have just different allocations? And the group settled on, no, again, all ten colleges need to keep their doors open, which means they have basic operations that they have to fulfill. So let's do a flat dollar amount. And fourteen million dollars became the number. Then the next step, so once you take out for the college allocation pool, you take out Maricopa grants, you take out the base allocation, twenty five percent of that remaining college allocation pool will then be allocated based on headcount. And the factor for this is annual headcount, twelve month enrollment, report iPads. One of the things that the group decided also is that these, whatever factors we use need to be factors that are consistently used across the system. And this is one that is reported the same because it's based on iPad's rules. All colleges for headcount will be weighted the same. Again, there was some conversation about, and I apologize for providing some of the background, but I kind of feel like it's, I don't want anybody to think these numbers just magically hit a spreadsheet and everybody went forth and did. There really was a lot of of conversation about what was the right approach to take as we worked through this. So there was some conversation about, is all headcount created equal? And there was some conversation about whether, for instance, a dual enrollment headcount should be weighted something less than one. And at the end of the day, the group got to the determination that every student we have is entitled to receive services, should they choose to receive them. So the idea was, no, let's, headcount's going to be the same for everyone. You'll see in the later schedules, we have the opportunity to go in and add weighting if we decide to. But at this point in time, we're going to leave it at one point oh unless something, or until something different comes up. So if we go to the next slide, Elsa, then the the seventy five percent of that college allocation pool will be allocated based on weighted footsie. Again, this was definitely a a conversation that was had about what is the right weighting. I will share that, you know, it's it's possible that in year two or in year three, we take a look at the weighting, but this is the answer that we got to, that the team got to, that seemed to make the most sense. So dual enrollment is weighted at point one five. There was an effort to make sure that that dual enrollment definitely covered the payments to the high schools, for instance, so that really that wasn't something that was going to, this weighting wasn't going to cost the colleges. And then just the reminder to everyone that all of the headcount is is fully weighted. So every dual enrollment student is entitled to services. Then we get to online, which includes, I messed that one up. I've got to mess something up, you guys. It's on live online and hybrid virtual is what is defined as online. And that is weighted at point five. Rio is weighted at point two five. And the reason for the difference is that, again, the different business model, different faculty and compensation models that Rio uses. Face to face is weighted at one. Rio is weighted at point five, again, different faculty model. And the understanding is that a lot of the face to face classes are in E S P agreements, which are not exactly the same as other face to face classes. So that's how they got to point five. And then bachelor's degrees, which is upper division classes, I need to add that somewhere, is weighted at one point two five. Some of that is about the differential tuition that we're charging related to those courses. So that's why there is a distinction between the three hundred or with the three hundred, four hundred level classes. So for the future, so maybe phase two, might be beyond a phase two. We definitely want to look at the waiting for occupational programs. Honestly, this is something that we wanted to do this year because we talk a lot about having several occupational programs that simply cost us more to offer. And we ran into the same issue in this model as we did with a conversation around differential tuition, that we have to clearly define what is a high cost program, identify those, and then do some sort of an analysis to make sure that they are truly high cost programs and not just because Kim said that they were a high cost program. So that work needs to be done and that will, I think, take us through the potential of a different tuition conversation as well as weighting them differently in this model. We could add a student success metric or some sort of a completion metric that could add into allocating a bucket. Before I go to that last point, one thing I I do want to advocate for though, too, is we do need to be careful how many different ways we try to allocate the dollars, because then it really diminishes the the value that we have on those allocations. So when the group was started doing their work, I did say, please don't come up with a hundred different ways to allocate it, because then it's not going to matter. And then we don't really know what our efforts are returning for us. So we can add things, but we just want to be very mindful that we're not diluting what we're actually trying to do. That last bullet point there, the multi year approach, potentially implemented in a future year, is the whole concept around a two year budget. This has been floating around in Maricopa now for at least five years. I won't even say a handful, at least five years. But it's been longer than that. And that's the idea about colleges knowing what their allocations are for two years in a row and giving them some breathing room between year and what, year one and year two. At this point in time, we're not advocating for that now. We think we need to get the model implemented first and then look at maybe what a phase two might look like. And then just that that last bullet point there, additional revenue earned by the system off year could be used to support one time initiatives. That again, is if something, you know, revenues come in higher than what we anticipated in year one, that gives the system a little bit of breathing room in year two. So also, we can go to the next slide, please. So additional factors, to get the anticipation going, because I'm still not to numbers yet. Additional factors, the model, absolutely, you'll see it, it won't, it won't take long to figure it out. Moves resources from one institution to another. We've, I I've reminded certain groups of people, a reallocation model means you're taking from some and giving to others. It doesn't mean that there's more dollars to allocate. It's, that's what reallocation means. Model can accommodate high cost programs that we talked about, can include a completion factor. Model factors in increases and decreases in overall revenue and budget. So that very top line as to our total expenditures, if the revenue pot increases, that total expenditure will increase. And then those new resources, those additional resources flow through the model. There's, there's not a lot of conversation about what do we do with it. There could be, but there doesn't have to be. Issues related to building, building age and deferred maintenance are addressed through the district wide capital program. That was largely what Leanne was talking about with the capital and technology improvement planning. We anticipate using that and a multi Um, we anticipate using that and a multi-year planning process for that. And again, um, just the, the, that Rio is included in the model weighted differently. Uh, due to some different types of programs, faculty structure and their camp compensation model. Um, next slide, I think we have one last one till we get to numbers. Implementation considerations. So the data that we're providing, so both footsie and headcount, you will see our two-year averages. And the point of that is to not have one off year adversely impact a college. Uh, phase in one-fifth of the total calculated reduction in twenty-six and then reassess each year with updated data. So when we get to those slides, you're going to see we have a twenty percent column. That is the, the one-fifth that we would look at for twenty-six. But the admonition there is that every year we run the new information through the model. And that shows what the allocations are for that next year. So increases in resources will change what that the output is. Um, changes in enrollment from college to college will change what that output is. Uh, one-time resources, so part of the implementation, one-time resources will be available. For resource shifts that require a longer timeline for implementation. Um, this then means uh for everybody listening that that is a potential use of fund balance. Until we get to a place where things have kind of evened themselves out and are flowing nicely, we may need to do that in order to help. Um, colleges get through this, um, I think a structural change. Uh, model will allow for district-wide additions and reductions to be applied again at that very top at the district-wide budget. And then uh reductions distributed through the model and additional resources uh allocated through the model, hopefully in an equitable fashion. And so then we'll start get, we'll actually dive into the numbers. So next slide for me, please, Elsa. Thank you. So if you remember back a couple of slides, we started with the Maricopa Grant allocation, and so there you'll see the eight and a half million dollars that is there. You'll see the, the total, and I'm going from left to right, is a total of a hundred and forty million dollars is the base allocation. Fourteen million dollars per college. The next section there is all about the headcount calculation, and remember, this is twenty-five percent of the rest. Of the college allocation pool. So we have twenty-three and twenty-four numbers there, uh, two-year average is that, that next column over. Um, modified is there, you'll notice they are exactly the same because we did not end up modifying headcount. Um, and then that next to last column is percent of total. And that percent of total against the, the total amount available for the headcount allocation totals a hundred and nineteen million dollars. Glad I have sense on that. Anyway, so we'll go to the next slide, please, and then we can move into the footsie piece. Have the calculation. And so for footsie, we'll start with dual enrollment, again, weighted at point one five. Um, we take audited footsie, so this is all audited footsie. And this is fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, two-year average is the next column. Modified to at point one five. Um, online footsie is next, again, live, online and hybrid virtual. Those are weighted at point five, um, with Rio weighted at point two five. And audited footsie and um average of twenty-three and twenty-four. Two-year average, uh, and then the total footsie, total modified footsie is that last column. And then we'll go to the next slide. And we'll look at in-person, um, is that next grouping, and that again is weighted at one point zero. Um, with the exception of Rio weighted at point five. Um, again, audited footsie for twenty-three and twenty-four, two-year average. Uh, the modification, if there is one in that next column. Uh, bachelor's degree, obviously, we didn't do it to your average because twenty-three is all zero. Um, twenty-four was our first year, so we just copied that over. Modified at one point two five. Um, and if you take all of those numbers, and so if you take the. Um, oh no, that's the total footsie, sorry. One step ahead. Um, the total footsie on those last three columns is if you add up. Uh, the dual footsie, the um in-person, the online. You'll get your total footsie totaling uh uh just under thirty-four thousand. Percent of total and the total footsie funding uh allocation bucket is three hundred and fifty-eight million. And on the screen is how it is distributed amongst the ten colleges. Now we'll go to the next slide, um. Which is uh the magic numbers that everybody is always looking for. So that new allocation is the sum of all of those parts we've talked about. So it is the sum of the Maricopa Grant portion. The um base allocation portion, the headcount portion. And the footsie portion of all of the allocations. And that comes to a total of uh just under six hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. The schedule presents it against the fiscal year twenty-five adopted budget of six hundred and nine million. And then you see the reallocation amount. The bottom line of that reallocation amount of seventeen million dollars is a factor of the um. Salary adjustments that was taken out at the first stage of the process in the prior year. It's added into the everybody's base budgets in the next year. And in combination with the, the budget reduction we did for fiscal year twenty-five. That's why reallocation does not equal zero. And it's because we're comparing two years that are not exactly the same. And then twenty percent of that reallocation column um is that, that far right column. Um, again, so the reallocation column represents the impact. If we were to implement this model one hundred percent on July first of two thousand and twenty-five. Which is not what we are suggesting. We are suggesting a five-year implementation phase, hence the twenty percent. Column. Um, on that second bullet, that last part, amount is subject to change based on final revenue estimates is what I was talking about earlier. Um, the, these numbers have been presented now um in the um where we've done the vetting for a month, two months. Things are changing. We will have final revenue numbers in, in February, March. Something could even possibly change after that. The model will be run every time we, not, maybe not every time. To figure out what the actual budgets are going to be for fiscal year twenty-six. I'm taking into account the twenty percent. So that, that's how it's gonna work as long as we want to take advantage of. You know, if we had predicted new construction was a little bit lower than it comes in, we want the system to take full advantage of the fact that there's more revenue. There, so we want to make sure we've got that flexibility. Each year, the formula will be applied to updated data. And so by the time we get to the end of the five-year implementation cycle. We may not be, um, I'll pick on Mesa, Mesa may not actually have a reduction of nine point three million dollars. Could it be ten? It could be ten. Could it be nine? It could be nine. We don't know how the next. Four years beyond what we can see for twenty-six are going to be, so. So that's where some of the flexibility and, and uh patience is going to have to be as we work through what a five-year. Implementation horizon might look like. Um, and then again, that final point, model will be evaluated annually by the Advisory Budget Council, so. Um, what we've asked people to think about is that, you know, this is a first step. In implementing a new budget model for Maricopa. This is a huge sea change for us. None of us, I think, that are on ABC or anybody else who has seen this are going to say, we've got it perfect and nothing needs to change. None of us are quite that bold at all, so we will want to say, what happened in twenty-six? Are there changes we need to make? Do we have better data on um CTE footsie? That we can now get a weighting in there, so, so we want to have that opportunity, and this should be done on an annual basis. And then we'll go to the next slide. And this is something we wanted to make sure that we shared because we had, again, been talking about cost per footsie in previous conversations. And what this slide shows is it shows um the cost per footsie from the twenty-five budget. Versus the cost per footsie for the new allocation. And what I want to draw people's attention to is, is kind of the, the groupings on the bottom left. And how they kind of, um, I'll say naturally came together. And for some of us, kind of made it all make more sense, or made a step back and say, hey, this kind of actually makes some sense. We recognize for sure that the um swings in the two colleges that have the largest reductions. Are, are large. We, we get that, we understand that. When we looked at this, this is again where it all kind of started to, to come together and people kind of went, oh, okay. So we have four colleges that are less than five thousand footsie, and they range from thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars per footsie. And those are the ones that are kind of in an orangish color, so Gateway, PB, Scottsdale and South Mountain. Five colleges have a range of five thousand to nine thousand footsie. And the range of cost per footsie for those colleges goes from ten thousand to twelve thousand. So kind of natural breaks in how it fell out. And then one college, which is Rio, um, nine thousand footsie, seventy-four hundred dollars per footsie. Um, and again, we've talked about this ad nauseam as to why they were weighted a little bit differently. The box on the right is also important because we also had this conversation. Is there an intention for us to get to the same cost per footsie? And what we came away with was, well, no, not really. Um, because our colleges are all different, and some of the larger ones, and I would say those five colleges in the five to nine thousand footsie range. Um, have greater economies of scale than some of the colleges, the smaller colleges do. That really need to provide the same types of services to their students as the largers do. So it seemed to make sense to us as a group that our effort should not be to get to the same cost per footsie. But that may be looking at it in this way, certainly looking at it maybe some in some other ways, this maybe makes some sense. So if we can go to the next slide, so I'll run through this next steps real quick, and then we can go back to questions on the budget allocation. Um, so February of twenty-five, so next month. Um, we are going to be doing roadshows to the colleges. Um, some of you may remember we did this in. February of twenty-two. Thank you. Um, and we're going to do that again. We will um probably have a presentation similar to this. That speaks to all the different parts we've been talking about. Um, the tuition fee schedule will be submitted to the board for action in February. Um, we did, it, this is all on me. I missed the, the first read of the uh uh tuition fee schedule for January, so my apologies for that. But there are not any significant changes. There are some small changes to some special fees. So I made the call and said we'd submit it in February for action. We'll make sure you have it um ahead of agenda review, so if there are any questions, we can get those answered. March of twenty-five, um, we'll do another presentation to the board. Again, we'll update changes to the general fund schedules and then also share other funds. April uh twenty-second of twenty-five will be the first read of the complete twenty-six budget schedule. Um, you may remember that there is more detail in there than in these presentations. These presentations are all. Much higher level for the system as a whole. Um, but the budget schedule actually breaks things down by college, by function, by type of expense. And then May, May twenty-seventh, I almost said May of twenty-seven, May twenty-seventh, truce and taxation. And budget hearing, um, I'm sorry, public hearing and the budget adoption. Will occur in May of twenty-five, and I would assume that we will be submitting the. Salary adjustment request to in May as we have done for the last few years. I will stop talking now and ask for any questions you all have. This is a lot of information. There is a lot of information in these slides. So my apologies to every faculty member who's like, oh, my gosh, she doesn't know how to do a PowerPoint presentation that isn't limited to bullets. This is going to be something we think is going to be circulated, so we wanted to try to get as much content into the slides as possible, so. For your indulgence on that.
So to that point, going back to the, the roadshows. Um, and a lot of slides, what, what is the plan to disseminate? And obviously, ABC has looked at this and given you recommendations. But are those roadshows going to be, are they virtual? Are they in person? How, how do you intend to? Pass that information through all the colleges?
President Bitter Smith, so I think um. I, I am thinking back to what we did in February of twenty-two, and um I think I'd probably take the same approach and leave it up to the colleges. And we did, in most of the colleges, we did both. And so there was um an, an in-person. Availability along with, so I'd say it's a hybrid. Meeting, and um we had lots of attendance that, that really did both. Um, so I would do the same thing again, I think, this time.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Sullivan says she has a lot, so let's, anyone else? Smith? Davis, questions?
I just have to say that I know that this was a lot of work, and I really do like this model a lot better than the model that we had before, so. I'm looking forward to hearing how all of this goes going forward.
Thank you for that, Ms. Davis. Um, so I, it, the work was ABC and certainly a sub-team of ABC. This, this was not me. This was not Leanne. We're the first ones to say. This wasn't us. Um, there were conversations that we all had, um, but really, it was a small group that really put this. Uh, together, and, and I think it was very thoughtful. Um, again, I think we'd all agree that it's likely not perfect, and we'll figure out what those imperfections are. Um, but it was, it was a huge lift um on, on behalf of that group.
Questions, Dr. Thor?
Uh, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Uh, first, one of the slides does reference that there's a way for. Uh, the base to be adjusted for growth. Could you talk a little bit about how growth will be accommodated?
Yes, Dr. Thor, give me one second, because I think you're talking about the methodology. And we talk about um opportunities for growth. So I, I, I think that where that is coming in um from the college perspective. Is about those metrics that are being used, so it is not about that fourteen million dollar base. Growing. Unless there is a determination. Let's say we look at the model again, and for fiscal year twenty-seven, we're like, no, we don't know that the base was correct. Whether it was too high or too low, whatever that is, then we can adjust the base in the model. Um, but there, there is not, um. It, the other factors are the factors that uh impact. Growth of the institution, so headcount and footsie are really the primary drivers there.
Okay, um. See, I want to talk a little bit about the weighted footsie. Um, I don't want to make sure that I understand it. So first, if we take dual enrollment at point one five. Um. Is the pay, are the payments to the high schools? Taken out at a district-wide level? So how are colleges? Managing to cover those payments with only a point one five weighted footsie?
So the group, uh, sorry, uh, President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, so the group that did the work. Went back and made sure that point one five of a footsie, because the payments to the col, to the high school, sorry. Payments to the high schools are based on footsie, right? Um, and it's a thousand dollars per footsie or thirteen hundred dollars per footsie. They were able to go back and determine that point one five will cover those payments. Um, but they do come from the college, um, and that is part of their footsie allocation and their headcount.
So is there anything left after they pay the high schools?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. Let's go. Yeah, thank you. So I'm asking Heather, who's our, our resident expert on this. Um, because I know that she was the one who did the work, I believe, um, on verifying that, because you can imagine Chandler Gilbert has a high dual. Enrollment population. Um, and yes, there are dollars that are left over after that, but they also get the full weighting of the headcount as well. So there are definitely dollars still available in the dual enrollment bucket, if you will.
Okay, so keeping on the weighted footsie. Um. I suppose what's gnawing at me a bit. Is that behavior follows incentives. And the way this weighted footsie is set up. It. Leads us away from the colleges having programs. That are. Cost-effective. Or perhaps even responsive to student needs. So for example, to wait online at point five zero. Discourages colleges from placing more courses in one of the online formats. Uh, yet our students are wanting more and more of these types of formats. So. Explain to me why you think colleges will not move towards even more face-to-face? Where they get. A full footsie. Versus some of these more non-traditional models.
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, that's a good question. I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that question. I think that's a question we can take back to ABC and see if we can formulate an answer. Um, what I will say is, um. You're right in that there needs to be for, there needs to be consideration for what we are trying to incentivize in a funding model, right? Um, that was even discussed in the last one that went down in a ball of flames, so. Um, we acknowledge that that is the case, and. I, I think one of the things I, I would say without having a, a better, more comprehensive answer. Is most certainly if that is what we find is happening. That's one of the considerations that needs to be taken under by ABC. Is most certainly if that is what we find is happening, that's one of the considerations that needs to be taken under by ABC. Um, because I think we will all acknowledge that. We, we have a, a, a duty, we should have a desire to have the classes our students want us to have. And if that is not what we are doing, then we need to take another look at what it is that we are doing. Um, and that is coming from me, you know, not, not the college academic person at all. But instinctively, that needs to be something that we should be looking at and considering. So I think it is something that needs to be documented and considered for sure in the future, but I'll see if I can get a better answer for you.
Okay, so similarly, and you would expect me to focus in on Rio's point two five for online. Um. In my mind, uh, Rio has put forward a business model that is very cost-effective. By the way it uses, uh, utilizes adjunct faculty and the way in which they are compensated. This particular model argues for Rio to return to what other colleges are doing. Why wouldn't they do that?
President Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, I don't think I have a good answer for you on that one either. Um, but I think it is something that we need to talk about and determine. How Rio's business model is different, how it serves Rio, how it serves the entire institution. Um, I, you know, I wasn't here when Rio was created, I don't think I was here when Rio was created. Um, but I know that there was a lot of conversation about what Rio was to the entire institution and education in. The county as well as beyond the county, obviously. Um, one thing I absolutely remember the college without walls, I remember that very distinctively. Um, and I think that, you know, we, we likely don't want to put something forward that changes that without being that intentionally decided. So I, not answer to your question, I understand that, but definitely um, note taken.
Okay, so the, my last um, question has to do with. The three colleges, Glendale, Scottsdale and Mesa. That need over the next five years to take some fairly significant reductions. Has there been discussion? Or will there be discussion about how there can be some system-wide solutions? To the problems faced by those three colleges, such as some. Using shared governance principles, some ways for faculty and staff perhaps to be. Uh, uh, placed at another college or partially placed at another college.
President, uh, Bitter Smith, Dr. Thor, I, that, what, what we have said about this specific area of the model is this is where the hard work starts. Um, we met with the president's council uh, last month and went over this model with them. And discussed that we will really rely on their leadership at their colleges and as system leaders. Um, to talk about how to make these, uh, these shifts in the budget. Um, as uh, neutral as possible to the system beneficial to, to our students. Um, the worst thing that we could do um, in implementing this model is to have two of our colleges go out on a hiring spree. And three others do reductions in force, that is not what we want to do, that's not what we think we have to do, but it will take a lot of collaborative effort. That is the reason that, that we have discussed, uh, setting aside contingency funds that can be tapped into, so if we have a plan that's can't be implemented. Within fiscal year twenty six, it's going to take eighteen months. The ability to tap into one-time funds to have that bridge funding so that that transition can occur smoothly and seamlessly and hopefully with as, as least harm as possible. But that, you're, you've, I think, hit the nail on the head, that's, that's where the tough conversations have to start to occur.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, thank you, Dr. Thor, for your questions, they were in the area of mine, I probably wouldn't have been quite as articulate, so thank you. Uh, is, so mine are a little more esoteric. Um, one is about the process. So you take this on a roadshow and the, you're walking in with the ABC support. The president's council has received this, but somewhere along the line, and I'm going to go back in history, sorry. It blows up. How do we accommodate the budget that has to come to us in May? So are you, is it perhaps that you're looking for and need some? No formality, but some support from us to continue along this process with the probability. That your presentation will. Um, become the budget model by which we move forward in May.
President Bitter Smith, Ms. Sullivan, yes, I think so, I think that level of support from the board would be helpful. We have tried um, to um, balance between uh, letting the groups that will be directly. And impact, directly responsible for implementing this, um, giving them a heads up about the model so that they are not blindsided by it. At the same time, not getting ahead of this evening's meeting, so some people even here in the room are familiar with model or somewhat familiar. Others may be hearing it for the first time, but I think understanding the level of support the model has throughout our system would, would be beneficial.
And, and I can answer for where we are as board on that, though, uh, I do want to comment that having been here. When we began this whole discussion about remodel, I really appreciate the um, work and effort that has been taken, particularly under the shared governance. Uh, practice to move this forward and I respect everyone who served on the ABC committee. Think that was a really good idea when that task force was created. Uh, I know, just because you're in the ether and we hear things, that not everyone is super enthusiastic, I think one comment. That I'd like to reinforce is we understand in this equity model that the perception that some schools are underfunded. Some schools are overfunded, it's really not the nomenclature we want to use. Uh, everyone is essentially underfunded, so I appreciate your definition of reallocation in this. Uh, then, uh, as we move forward. So another question, and I was curious where I was going to see that in this model. We have been trying to build up uh, reserves of contingencies beyond a two-month survival or, or whatever. Where does that get accommodated to increase that to a professional? Position or recommended best practice position?
President Bitter Smith, Mrs. Sullivan, so a- absolutely, that is what we want to do and we also want colleges to be able to do that as well. Um, there, there was a time in our past when we had a line item called contingency. That was not received well, um, by some previous folks, so that was struck from our language, we've put it all back in now. Um, now it's a matter of figuring out how do you build contingency? And so it is finding, you know, for us as a system, it'll be finding a million here, a million there, putting it into a contingency line where we can. Um, do that as part of the balancing effort or even as part of future asks when we look at uh, potential changes in revenue sources. The building of a contingency needs to fall in there. Um, financial stability, so we talk a lot in the, the general fund about the ten percent. Forward policy requirement of financial stability, that is not contingency. That is, the walls are burning down around us, maybe the worst thing I could.
Or, or analogy, right?
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, we're, we're closing our doors, so we're using our fund balance in order to wind everything down, that is what financial stability is. Um, or that, you know, we have some huge event that, uh, I'll use the data security incident from two thousand and thirteen, fifty million dollars later. You know, we, we had to pay for everything that, uh, that resulted in. Um, if we'd had to dip into financial stability, we would have because we needed to, but we would have replenished it and all those other things. Contingency is that you have things that are going to happen, every one of us does, every division does, every college does. Has something that came, comes up in a year that they hadn't planned for. They should have an, a portion of an allocated budget that can be called contingency. So we encourage the colleges to really think about that, the divisions and then the system as a whole. It's just a matter of, you know, where you've got resources that you figure out, I don't really need to spend it there. You put it in contingency instead of necessarily spending it over here. So there's multiple ways to do that. Um, I do think it is, uh, the, I think it is ABC's intention to have a contingency conversation as one of our spring items. To talk about what is an acceptable level of contingency. Somebody comes to me tomorrow and says, I want ten percent of my budget to be contingency, I'm gonna say, yeah, I don't think that's really gonna work. That's a lot to hold back and not use for ongoing operations, but what is the right level of contingency? So we'll need to look at that as a system and we'll need to look at that as individual business units as well.
Thank you. Uh, the program issue, uh, Dr. Thor covered for me in that regard, so, um. But what, what are the fears that you are hearing from people about this new model?
So I, I certainly don't claim to know what all of those fears are, right, I'm sure I haven't heard anything, I think the colleges that are looking at reduced budgets. It's, and, and this actually did come up in ABC, we have faculty, as I mentioned, that sit on that group. Concerns are about how do we implement it, what does this mean for me, my college, my colleagues, my students? Um, I don't have a good answer to that right now, I don't think any of us do, but that's where that collaboration and teamwork really need to kick in. Um, and, and talking about how do we move resources around in a way that, um, respects shared governance, respects our, our faculty agreement, respects. Um, the, our, our respects our, our student desires. Um, so I think that, that's probably the biggest concern. And one of, one of the things, and Kim, Kim did a really good job of discussing this. But I think where everyone's eyes just naturally go on the chart that's up there right now is to that reallocation column and those numbers are big and scary and they look like they. They, they are devastating to at least two, but really three of those, those colleges. Um, the twenty percent, the, the phasing this in as student populations change. But also as we look at funding for our entire model, um, and that, that's what I think this positions us really well to do is start to, to have. Um, informed discussions about is our entire system funded at the level it needs to be funded at? So those numbers could look very different two years from now, a year from now, five years from now, and um, I think. Uh, uh, Kim gave a range of, you know, nine to ten million for Mesa, but, but maybe that's far less than that because, um, because the, the system is funded differently. And I'm not trying to get ahead of that any conversations, but I think it just positions us to have some really intelligent conversations over the next year.
So the element of collaboration and conversation really ties into where you started, I believe. Miss Corneo with the word transparency and your work, collaborative work through ABC, so, thank you. Uh, I have one other piece, but I do want to comment that. The hard work that all of you put into this is incredible. I know that it's a journey that's difficult. Um, I do believe that our system does have to accommodate a budget remodel. And we have to start somewhere. And I think, given the effort and the formulae positioning is as good as we can be today. Um, anticipating that the issue that you brought up of flexibility, its application. Uh, to implementation, receiving input will only reinforce and make it better. And um, so that would be my editorial comment. Uh, but my last one is kind of an interesting one as I look down my table here to Dr. Gonzalez. And it, so you're the leader pack here and uh, what, what is your vision and thoughts on this um, model?
President Bitter Smith, Ms. Sullivan, thank you uh, for that question. A lot of thoughts around this and, and mostly around, um, I think I go back to the technology um, analogy where this is a version one point O. You know, it's, it's a two-point-O rollout of Maricopa's uh, budget, but it, this is our version one point O, which would indicate to everyone that. Um, we're not letting a, a good idea and a courageous one at that to get in the way of, you know, perfection. So we're gonna, we're gonna give this a try and see how it goes, we're gonna monitor it, I know that it's going to be challenging, it's, it's a change, it's different. Um, I appreciate Dr. Thor's uh, questions, they're really good questions that I think that the group needs to think about. Um, I, I'm also encouraged at conversations that I'm aware of that our college presidents are already having. Um, when they began to see what these numbers could look like and, you know, they've all decided that they're not going to leave one another hanging. Uh, that they're working together to solve this from a systems perspective and that it's not just Scottsdale's problem to identify where. Next year, they've got a, you know, a rake out one point seven mil on this five-year journey. Um, I think there are some, uh, you know, opportunities, one that comes to my mind as well too is voluntary movement of people from one institution to another. Uh, there is probably an average that we can use on what the savings is for employee that does that regardless if it's an administrator, faculty or staff. Uh, so it'd be interesting to see uh, what that, what that entails and um, that, that could be exciting. For some that are interested in doing that, to be able to move to another campus, to be reinvigorated, to join a new group. Join new staff, join new faculty, meet new students, be in a different part of town, I, I really hope that there are some that might. Um, see that as an open-minded opportunity to reinvent in some ways. Um, definitely take your expertise over to another part of the valley, to another college. Um, I appreciate the work that the, the team has put into this. Um, we've, we've had several um, iterations that reach a point and then we look over that cliff and we don't want to make the jump. And so that's why I use the word courageous, because this is going to require courage in our part to, to try something. Um, the ABC was the first big shared governance uh, group that was formed. Um, shortly after becoming interim chancellor and you after shortly becoming the, the, the chair of the, of the board and the board supported that and we all supported that. We've seen some really good work come out of ABC over the last four and a half years and I just really appreciate the work that they're doing. Um, and I, the other thing that I like about this too and that I would appreciate, uh, if I were still a college president is knowing what my budget is going to look like, at least for the next couple of years. I think there's opportunities in the future to, you know, we, we just went through the expenditure limitation where we reset a base. I think there's a potential for us to reset a base. Um, there's already discussion of what future uh, consideration could be around property tax. What future consideration could be around tuition? There isn't anything that says that a portion of that couldn't go towards a reset of base, for example. You know, to, to really help out some of these colleges that may have been looking um, to, you know, to reduce these cuts in the future. Um, but I would agree with uh, Leanne in that, uh, we, we have to, once we implement this, we really need to ask ourselves as a system. Are we appropriately budgeted as a system to do the work that we've been tasked, charged to do um, by our county, by our state? Um, to serve our communities. Um, and, and my first initial guess and response would be, we, we probably are not, we probably really need to think about that. Uh, I couldn't give you exact numbers, but if I had to put some money on it, no pun intended. I would, uh, I'd donate my winnings to this budget, but uh, you know, I would say that we, we're probably, uh, we need to rethink about, we need to think about our funding. Uh, we are active at the legislative level to see the restoration of funding. We've been successful in seeing the restoration of STEM funding, that's been helpful, as you see, we're seeing a portion of that, you know, being used for operating aid. Um, we're going to work really hard. And relentlessly hard at uh, trying to see the restoration of operating aid to our system. That's one of our um, legislative priorities. So again, I think that this is a, it's a village-wide effort, it's not just my job, it's not just ABC's job, it won't just be the president's, the VPAS's. We're gonna have to come together collectively um, to, to crack this one. Um, the other thing that I would share with you is that. As we were preparing for the um, an unfortunate outcome related to proposition forty-six. A lot of good ideas came forward on what we could do to save money as an organization, to improve efficiencies, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, those conversations are continuing and we are cherry picking from that. Um, some of the things that could be done that aren't detrimental to the system. But um, can really help us and especially help some of these colleges that would like to find ways to save money moving forward, so. A portion of a lot of the, the many thoughts currently racing through my head around this, thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and again, thank you. I, I think my last comment would be, as this moves forward, certainly, uh, you have my support personally, professionally, uh, as a board member, but that's irrelevant. Until we get to, to the final piece, but I continue to express my hope. That as people's fears are presented, that there's a way to uh. Absorb them and respond thoughtfully so. absorb them and respond thoughtfully so that everyone can move forward in some level of, uh, comfort. Maybe that was the wrong word, uh, to accommodate the shift, to move our system forward. And so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan and Dr. Gonzalez. Uh, just sort of as a collective follow-up to all of these questions, because we've given you more, uh, broader questions to answer, but you, the next step is obviously to do the, the roadshows as you describe them. How do you anticipate keeping the board informed in the next, it looks like, month and a half as you're doing roadshows? As you hear new questions or, um, the word fears, I think, was described? Is there a mechanism that we can continue to understand what's happening within our, um, Maricopa family as well as what's happening with iterations of change as a result of, of questions and issues that have been raised?
Yes, President Bittersmith, what I would propose is setting up, um, some individual briefings with board members. Perhaps we get halfway through those, uh, those roadshows and set up some time to talk, and then do it again when we're, when we're done, so we can share those concerns with you. I think, um, this, just like anything else, the unknown is the biggest, and, and people want to know. They want to know what, what does this mean, and that's the tough part, is that, that unknown. And so I guess that's one of the things I would ask for as we move forward, is some patience as we as a system figure out what this means. Um, and that we do, as, as you said, work collaboratively, collaboratively together, because I, I think it's doable. Um, I think it's going to take some creativity, um, but the, that fear space is, is where, uh, where we end up with, uh, with people not able to engage in that way, and I, I think we can move past that.
Board members, does that work for you, some individual check-ins as we work through the process?
Well, with that, my thanks to both of you and the team, ABC team, and, um, all the hours, and I think some agony, too, has happened in this process. Any remaining questions from the board? Oh, Ms. Davis?
I, I think we were emailed, we were emailed the slides this afternoon, I believe, yeah. Uh, those, and nothing has changed from that, but I, I, but I do think it's in your email, if not, but yeah, so. Well, with that, uh, let me thank everyone for your time and attention tonight. Um, this is obviously a very critical issue for the district as we move forward, among many other things that are, we're dealing with as well. But, um, again, thank you to the team for your presentation as well as to the cyber team, we appreciate that update as well. Uh, so, uh, what the record reflects, the time is six forty, and the meeting of the Maricopa Community College Governing Board, all of the meetings, now stand adjourned. Thank you.